Well, I called thanks meeting to order. It's great to see so many people here tonight. So roll call, please.
Barclay Walters, Barton.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Harton.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Incantation to that would be good by day better. West Hazel, Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Our Father God, this month marks the beginning of that season of the year that we call the summer. We thank you for the beauty of your creation that we're able to see all around us in this time of year. We thank you for the colorful flowers and the green grass and the growing gardens. We thank you for the bright sunshine and the warm temperatures and the long days. We thank you for the opportunities that most of us have to spend more time with our family members and friends, to develop those relationships that matter the most to us. Father God, we pray that you will help us to create good memories during this season of the year, memories that will live on even after we leave this world. Father God, we thank you for this community and for the people who live here. We thank you, our Father God, especially for our mayor and the members of this city council. Father, they are people who invest time and energy to help make our community a better place in which to live. We pray that you will bless them for being a blessing to us. We ask, Father God, that you will give them wisdom so that they will make good decisions in this meeting and in every meeting they conduct. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the special order of business, the presentation of mayor's certificate of recognition. So I'm gonna come on up here to the podium. Ally, if you could, now, join me, please. So I have a mayor's certificate of recognition, which I'm going to read and present out. So this is the city of Hazel, Kansas, mayor's certificate of recognition. As mayor of the city of Hazel, Kansas, in recognizing heroic actions and saving a life, acknowledgement of her extraordinary bravery and quick thinking during a building accident is with great pride that I award this mayor's certificate of recognition to Ally Drake. Deep into action, risking her own safety to rescue her friend in distress. Her selflessness, courage, and unwavering determination serve as an inspiration to us all. By saving a life, Ally Drake has demonstrated the true spirit of heroism, reflecting the values and compassion and bravery that make our community strong. We extend our deepest gratitude and appreciation for Ally Drake's exceptional act of heroism. Given under my hand, official seal of the mayor's office, 12th day of June, 2023. Congratulations. Thank you again. Something else I'd like to give you, oh, besides this? Pull it up on your dresser or something? This is a mayor's coin. So this is from the office of the mayor, Russ Kessler, city of Hazel, Kansas. On the back, it has a 3D picture of our Hazel flag, and great things are happening in Hazel. So great things are happening in Hazel, thanks to you. So, there you go. All right? All right, next we have the American Legion Kansas Law Enforcement Officer of the Year.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us this evening. Every year, over 200 American Legion posts across the state of Kansas recognize law enforcement officers within their city's jurisdiction as their local officer of the year. Those officers' names are then forwarded to our State Department headquarters for selection of the state officer of law enforcement of the year. This year, post 408 Derby Hazel has chosen Sergeant Levon Kratz as our local selection. He has been chosen out of more than 200 officers as the Kansas American Legion Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. Sergeant Kratz, would you join me, please? It is my honor and pleasure to present you with this plaque from the Kansas Department of the American Legion. It reads as follows. This is to certify that the American Legion has bestowed the title of Kansas Law Enforcement Officer of the Year to Sergeant Levon Kratz.
Kratz.
Yes, Sergeant. For outstanding selfless service over and above normal duties through community service and professional achievement, thereby exemplifying the meaning of the phrase "America's Way" best. You reflect great credit on yourself and the Hazel Police Department. Presented by the American Legion at the 2023 Department Convention of Kansas, signed by Jimmy L. Foster, Department Adjutant, and Jeremy J. Elhart, Department Commander. You will now represent the state of Kansas in the selection from 50 other officers nationwide to possibly be the American Legion National Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. Thank you for service and congratulations.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. So next we have Business Appreciation Month Proclamation. RUS, June has been designated as a Business Appreciation Month for the last two decades by the Kansas Department of Commerce to recognize businesses across the state for the vitality importance of contributions they make to the well-being of our communities. And RUS, the Hazel businesses provide essential employment opportunities to a diverse workforce, embrace initiative technologies, provide local tax revenues, and make other significant contributions to our community that promote educational opportunities for our children and economic well-being for our citizens. RUS, the city of Hazel is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of businesses and industries that reside in Hazel. And RUS, Business Appreciation Month offers the citizens of Hazel, city of Hazel, an opportunity to recognize city businesses for the essential role they play in increasing the quality of life of our citizens. Now therefore, I, Russ Kessler, mayor of the city of Hazel, Kansas, on behalf of the council, staff, residents hereby proclaim June as Business Appreciation Month, dated today. All right, next we have presentation and approval of minutes, A, minutes of May 8th, 2023. Has been better?
To make motion, we approve the minutes of the previous business meeting.
Second. We have motion on second to approve the minutes of May 8th, 2023. Any discussion? Question, please.
Harton.
Yes.
Ewer.
Of staying.
Bender.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, next we have item one, citizens to be heard. He is not here today. Item two, approval of licenses and bonds, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A resolution authorizing the offering of sale of general obligation temporary notes, series A, 2023, of the city of Hazel, Kansas.
Good evening, Mayor. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council. I appreciate you having me out here tonight. I plan to just kind of discuss this resolution briefly and then I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. This resolution authorizes the public sale of temporary notes in order to finance the six projects located in and around the Wheatland Village addition that will basically serve as internal public improvements in order to help serve that subdivision. This resolution would authorize that sale to occur on July the 10th of this year. As I mentioned, it will be a public sale. So any of the banks who are interested in buying the city's temporary notes would have the ability to submit a bid at that time. Based on those bids, working with our firm as well as, you know, working with Will and Brett Shogren, who's the city's municipal advisor, will help to take a look at those bids, figure out which one is the best bid, which generally means the lowest interest rate and the lowest interest cost to the city. Thereafter, at your meeting to be held that night, the city would then adopt a resolution formally awarding the sale of those temporary notes to that best bidder. That resolution will have the final interest rate and the final principal amount. And then those notes would actually close on August the 1st. So that's the date then when the note would be turned over to that best bidding bank in exchange for the purchase price being deposited in the city's bank account, at which point then you can start using the money to actually pay for those project costs out at Wheatland Edition. As I mentioned, this resolution, once adopted, will authorize that sale to occur. It'll authorize our firm, along with Brett Shogren and his team over at Stiefel, to take all the necessary actions related to that sale and ultimate closing of the note issue. And so with that being said, I'll pause for any questions or comments that you may have.
Council, have any questions or comments? I've seen none. What would the council like to do? Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, series A, 2023, of the city of Hazel, Kansas.
Second. So we have a motion on second to approve the resolution authorizing and ordering for the sale of general obligation temporary notes, as presented. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barton.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next we have item four, notices and communications, government body announcements. Councilman Crum?
Stuff going on at the library. Again, on Tuesdays at 10:30, they have the Parents' Teacher Summer Storytime going on. And then at 10 o'clock will be a stepping stones class, and that's going to be the second session. And then at 3 o'clock will be a summer matinee movie, and they're showing The Incredibles 2. Then on the 14th, which is Wednesday, they'll be doing a special performance of The Traveling Lantern. Then they have polymer clay on the 15th and an origami activity also on the 15th. There's a bunch going on. I got two different... They actually had to put out two different calendars this month because they got so much going on. They do have a Friends of the Book Library and going on in the gazebo on the 17th. They've got some more pottery classes going on the 19th and the 20th. Another matinee on the 20th is the Lego Movie, and then the Lego Club will meet at 4 o'clock on the 21st. On the 22nd, they'll be doing a summer activity with balloon animals. And then on the 28th, there'll be a special performance of Mad Science, which I think is always a really popular one. And they've got other activities going on with cookie decorating. If you'd like, you can get ahold of the library or take a look at their website or find them on Facebook and find out all the other activities going on. Like I said, there's actually so much going on that they had to put out two different lists of activities going on. They do a really good job of having activities for the kids to do when they're out of school. That's what's going on at the library.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Thought I have a couple. Assistant Living Facility, they will have a groundbreaking on June 29th at 10:00 a.m. This will be at their location at River Forest on the eastern side of K Avenue. All the public is invited to go, as well as the city council, if you'd like to go for the groundbreaking. Again, that's on June 29th at 10:00 a.m. Some of the senior center upcoming events, there's a heat safety presentation on Thursday, June 15th at 10:45. Center and Hustle will be closed on June 10th, June 19th. No meals will be served. Tech class on Tuesday, June 30th, sorry, 20th, June 20th, starting at 2:00 p.m. Common ground market on Thursday, June 22nd at 12:00 p.m. The monthly breakfast on Saturday, June 24th at 10:00 a.m. Smart driving class on Thursday, June 29th at 1:00 p.m. The wild party on Friday, July 14th at 6:00 p.m. Some of the recurring programs at the senior center, Domino's, Donuts, Coffee and Conversation, Cheer yoga, fillers, bingo, book bouncing.
Uncle.
Uncle, yeah, thanks. Steps, cards, drumming, well rap, let's groove, and crafting club. Some of the hustle numbers from last year, one-way riders, 293, and for this May, 254. Last May, there were seven new registered riders. This May, there are eight new registered riders. That is all I have. All right, next we have on B, Central County Fire Department Station 34, monthly report. When you pack it. Next, C, county proclamation for Hazel Purple Heart designation. There's also a D, letter from Congressman Ron Estes for the Purple Heart City designation. These are all groups that are congratulating the city for becoming a Purple Heart city. E, mo, new business. We have Rich Beasley from Buffalo Brew. I believe he's here. Want to say anything about yourself or the company or?
Uh, yeah. So I'm Rich. This is David and Tish.
You don't mind coming up to the podium?
Hello, I'm Rich Beasley. This is David and Tish. And they're actually be managing the location here in Hazel, but we own Buffalo Brew Coffee Company. We started out in Valley Center, Kansas, in 2020. And we have a location in Valley Center, in Mays, and then we have a mobile coffee truck. And then we have a few other locations that are in the works as well, but this is the next one that is going to be open. And it's just a drive-through coffee style, so you get to stay in your car, real simple. And it's artisan coffee, so it's just super... We take a lot of pride in the coffee we serve. We do alternatives. We have milk alternatives. We have things outside of coffee if you don't like coffee. So we have all sorts of things, kid-friendly, parent-friendly, just a little bit of everything. We're family-owned, family-operated, and we just really take a lot of pride in being part of the community. And we're super excited. I love what you guys got going on right here. Just, it seems like you guys have put a lot of pride into your town, and we're super excited to be a part of it. So just thank you for accepting us into this community, and we're ready to get started here, hopefully at the beginning of July. And yeah, I mean, does anyone have any questions for us?
Where are you going to be located?
So there's a... It's off of Broadway and... Grand. And it's near the... There's a car wash.
Yep.
And it's right next to the car wash, and it's in between a liquor store and a car wash. And there's an open lot there. It's a cute little... It looks like a little house, like a little tiny house. It's not quite all done. There'll be little signage and stuff. So you'll sit here before too long. But it's just super simple. And like I said, you just... It's really casual, but you just stay in your car. So whether it's hot or cold, you have a real chill environment through. And you come up to the window, and you'll see either Tish or David or one of us, and we'll give you recommendations. We've been doing this for a while now. So we have tons of different drinks, hundreds of different drinks. We come out with drinks every month. And we're not owned by a corporation, so everything we do is locally sourced in almost all instances. Or at least it's tied into the community in almost every aspect of our business. And so we try to be community-driven in our vendors and our insurance and all the things that we can do to keep commerce flowing throughout the communities that we're in. So we're, again, just really excited to be a part of this community, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming to Hazel. Are there any other new businesses in the audience? Not seeing any. All right, next we have F, letter of... From the Woodstop Transit regarding the Hazel Hustle grant award. Next we have item five, old business. We have none. Item six, other business. Take consideration of River Forest 3rd Edition final plat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. On May 11th, the Hazel Playing Commission received the final plat for the River Forest 3rd Edition and are recommending approval. I believe the agent Travis Hazel may be in the audience. Yes, thank you, sir. He's here. If he can answer any questions you guys may have, and this is now before you for your consideration.
Does the council have any questions or what would you like to do? Councilman Bender?
There's no discussion. I make a motion. We approve the River Forest 3rd Edition final plat.
Second. We have motion on second to approve the River Forest 3rd Edition final plat. Any discussion? Question, please.
Barton.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have B, presentation of 2022 audit report. Michael Gerber from...
Forbes. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate you having me here today. My name's Michael Gerber. I'm a partner with Forbes. We're the accounting firm that does your audits. Previously, we were known as BKD. Last year, we had a merger, and rather than jumble up the letters of the firm that we merged with, we created a new name. So if anybody's curious, looking at reports last year, why the name changed, just wanted to keep you updated on that. But I want to start by thanking your team, between Will and Angie, especially Angie getting us what we need to do our work to get through our audits. You did have a system conversion this year, new software. That can always be a little bit of a challenge, but Angie took it head-on and really appreciate her help getting us what we need. So as far as the reports, I think I saw the two documents in the agenda. I believe the management letter was first. I'm just going to speak to both of them at a very high level. The management letter has a lot of required communications with management. The two highlights that I want to point out in here are that were no adjustments based on our audit procedures, which is always good. If you're getting, you know, monthly statements or quarterly statements, you can have some confidence that there's some good numbers there. The other side of it is we always kind of kick the tires on your internal control, especially over cash. You know, are there controls over the spending of that, of the receipt of it? If we have any issues, we'll have some written comments within this letter. The good news is, based on our testing, we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to write. So that speaks to the strength of the controls that you have for this organization here. The other document is going to be a few pages down. It's a pretty thick one. You'll obviously have it electronically, but these are the actual financial statements themselves. Two items that I want to mention here, we did issue what would be relatively a clean opinion for this group. You do report on a regulatory basis. It's a little bit different than what maybe a for-profit entity or even a nonprofit. You have various specialized requirements with your reporting. But it is a clean opinion, so that's certainly good news there. As far as the numbers go, I was kind of comparing the activity between the years. Not a whole lot of changes. I'd say overall business as usual. You did have a 2022 temporary note that you issued last year. I think a gentleman just presented on that for 2023, so we'll have that new for next year. ARPA funding continued at a similar level as the prior year. I'm sure that's going to dry up here eventually. But overall, cash balances have increased, and activity has stayed relatively similar compared to prior year. So with that, I'll ask if there's any questions, or Will, if there's anything that I forgot or Angie that I should mention at this point.
Council, have any questions? Not seeing any?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next we have C, organized trash collection planning meeting update. Will?
In the council packet, I did include a memo briefly describing what we discussed at organized trash collection planning meeting number two. But since we have one planning meeting left, I wanted to get council's opinion. I wanted to see if I can get a consensus from the council members that are here on a couple of questions that I had. The first one in there is basically, if we go to a single trash collection provider, what length of term would you like to see for that for this first time? The trash collectors would like to see at least five years to cover their capital costs with different carts and different equipment they may have to purchase. You know, it's up to the council to look at a five-year or something longer. So I was going to see if council had any opinion on that. And if not, I would recommend five-year from what I've heard, based on what the trash collector, trash haulers would like as far as the briefest term. But also, I think it's maybe a good idea to have that briefest term for this first time in case there are any issues. We don't want to be stuck forever with a company if we have issues with them. I wanted to see if council had any opinion on that.
Councilman Crum?
Most of the towns around here, they have... Did they start out with a five-year? Do you know?
I can't answer. I can't answer that. I don't know if most of them started with a five-year or not.
Do you know what they're on now?
So I think if they like it, they try and go for a 10. So once they've had experience with it, I think Derby's most recently was a 10.
Okay. I don't have a problem with going with five years because like, kind of like you said, you get to make sure it's going to work the way we think it's going to work, if that's the direction we end up going. So I don't have a problem with five years.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I think five years, starting out, I think five-year term would be plenty capable. That way, if there is anything beyond that, we can do it, because anything longer than that, you're just tied into it then, so.
Okay. If there's nothing else on that one, the second question I had, which I think I already know the direction from comments I've heard, is basically, when we request the proposal for services, what I think I've been hearing from council is that we want to request a proposal for trash only for everybody. Then if somebody, if a resident wants to have recycling, that would be an additional service that they would contract with. We would still have the rate within here, but we would not require people and not charge people for recycling. And if that's not clear, just let me know. I'll try and restate it. But does anyone have an opinion on that?
Councilman Crum?
As long as you said that but the recycling, it won't be required, but if somebody wants to do it, that'll be in the RFP too, so they'll have to give a designated price?
Yes. Designate, require them to provide a price in here if somebody wants to have that service. Number seven.
As long as that's covered, I'm fine with doing that way.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I already know my opinion on this recycling, so.
Since the meeting, I've been thinking about what we talked about regarding billing. And I know we kind of, we didn't really reach a conclusion or consensus, but it seemed like the direction that we were headed was to let the trash company or companies, haulers, take care of the billing and then sort of report to us. But I know some of the other cities that are doing this incorporate the billing along with a water bill or another utility bill. Didn't we just incorporate a new billing system for our water?
We do have a new billing system.
How... Have we thought about that, about, you know, would it be difficult for us to incorporate that into the water billing system? I know some other people are doing it.
I'm not sure how easy that would be. Angie may be able to...
It wouldn't be very difficult.
Well, I wonder if it hadn't... If it wouldn't be wise for us to at least consider it and maybe think about what some of the benefits might be, rather than us depending on the trash haulers to give us their billing information and come back to us and go, hey, so-and-so down on Main Street doesn't have a container or to report that data back to us, if it would kind of put us a little more in control of that. I know there's probably pros and cons either way, but I don't know what the capabilities of our new water bill system is. But if it's something that might be of benefit to us, I'd like to see us at least look into it.
Okay.
Councilperson, any word?
He's already said.
Councilman Crum?
I just kind of want to piggyback on it. Would that even possibly get us a better price on the RFP if the company knows they're not going to have to handle the billing?
So it's hard to say what they would do. You would think if they didn't have to do that, they would lower the price. In reality, will that happen? I cannot answer that.
Councilperson, any word?
Do you know how Derby does it?
Do you remember, Tony?
Refuse hauler takes care of the billing.
Who?
The refuse hauler takes care of the billing at Derby.
I think I would like that better than it being on my water bill because there are people in Hazel, I mean, that have like... that have like one sack a week.
I think the challenge would be who do they call? Like on a billing question, they would call City Hall, but then on a service issue, they would call the refuse hauler. And I think there may be, like you said, I mean, there's pros and cons both ways.
Yeah, there probably will be some of that either way we go. And there will always be exceptions that we're probably going to have to manually figure out. You know, I'm a well, I don't even have a water bill. So, you know, I'm going to be one of those exceptions. So I don't know that we can completely escape that, but we'd just like to, I would just like to look at it before we completely discount it.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none? Thank you. All right, next we have a consideration of agreement with Union Pacific Railroad.
In the packet, there's also a memo detailing this agreement. Just wanted to point out, this is for construction and maintenance in the railroad property for the sidewalk project that we're doing that goes up Main Street and then on sixty, east on Sixty-third over to Maple. And so with this agreement, there's a one-time cost of ten thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars. And then, as you saw in the memo, if you read through it, there's also an annual maintenance fee of two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars that will start three years after the effective date of this agreement. And that's the maintenance forever cost with the railroad. So if you have any questions, I can answer them. The main part of the project, the main cost for the project is the construction, which will be paid for eighty percent through, with federal funds through the WAMPO tip process, twenty percent city cost on construction.
And where would we pay that two thousand? Where would that end up coming from?
Capital improvements Fund.
Councilor, any word?
Well, I was looking at that, Will. I just, you know, I think, you know, I mean, I guess my issue with the railroad is we're going to pay them so much annually for whatever upkeep or whatever. And I hate to say it, but they don't upkeep what they got now. So why should, I guess my question is, is why should we pay an annual fee for them to upkeep when they're not even upkeeping the mowing and, you know, the stuff and everything that they're supposed to be doing now? They don't even do that. So why would we, you know, I guess that's an issue that.
Yeah, the answer's not great, but Josh pointed out this morning, when you work with the railroad, you get railroaded. And if we don't do this, if we don't approve their agreement by their rules, then the project dies.
Right.
The short answer.
Okay. Councilman Better?
I'm sorry, I probably missed this when you were, when you started. What do we get for two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars?
That's the construction portion. And, okay, when you work with the railroad, you got to do everything they want you to do or they're not going to let you play. So basically, they've got, Tony, you can correct the verbiage I'm using. They've got basically, I don't know, not pallets, what do they call them? Plates, pallets? Anyway, when you go across the railroad at Sixty-third, right by the ball fields?
Yep.
Those pallets or plates that they have in there, we have to replace every one of them. We have to pay for that. And we have to go extend past where they currently are at to cover the area that the sidewalk's going to be in. And we have to not only do that, they have to, they have to design it. We already had the design agreement. We approved that one last year, but their cost estimate that they've given us is to do all that work and it's detailed in the agreement that's in the packet. But basically, it's their cost, their materials that we're paying for the replacement of that whole, the whole part that goes across Sixty-third there as well to be able to do the project. Yeah.
Four million dollars.
Is there going to be any kind of markings or anything? I mean, I know you got the crossbars that come down and all that stuff. You don't put crossbars or something for pedestrians so they don't?
So, Tony, do you remember in the designs?
There's nothing for pedestrians or bicycles, markings.
So you're on your own.
I think when we went out on site and looked at it, when the crossbar was down, the back half of the crossbar is going to be somewhat of an indication that you're not able to go across as well. And so nothing specifically to cover the whole sidewalk.
Right. Well, it's crazy when we're fortunate, the cabinet that's right there, they teased us that we'd maybe have to replace that and move that fifty feet down the rail. But luckily, we got a variance door that can stay where it's at. Otherwise, I think the estimate was.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars extra. So I guess in a way, I consider ourselves fortunate, I guess, a little bit, but.
And the good portion on that two hundred and sixty-one thousand is that's the, falls under the eighty-twenty because it's part of the construction cost.
Yeah, I realize that.
Councilor Crum?
I begrudgingly make a motion to we accept the agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad.
Second.
We have a motion on second to accept agreement with Union Pacific Railroad. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
I begrudgingly vote yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next we have E, consideration of taser replacement chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, we have a consideration of requests to purchase new tasers for the department. Right now, we're currently using the Taser X two CEW, which is a conductive energy weapon. It's nearing its production end of life and the company that manufactures the tasers is Axon, and they're going to discontinue the sale of those March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Currently, they're the sole source for the tasers, so that's, that's where we have to get them. So we only have one bid. They've issued a five-year useful life recommendation for all taser weapons. Ours, we've had since two thousand and nineteen, so we've had them for a couple of years now. We've only had failure of a couple of units at this point, but we're looking forward to the future and looking to replace those with the newer technology. And also, there is some insurance protection there also for us if we stay within their, within their recommended timeframe there in five years. So what we're looking at is replacing the weapons that we currently have. And they divide them into five annual installments. It's the same type of a plan that we're on right now. We're under the same one that the council approved in two thousand and nineteen. So we're on that same, we're proposing the same basic plan here. This time, the total cost is sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. That'll be broken up into five payments of twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-two forty-three. Now, that sounds like a lot of money. We said down below that the money will come from partially currently budgeted items and the remainder from the federal law enforcement trust. Now, with that, we, in our line items in our budget, we have line items in there for taser batteries, taser cartridges, training cartridges for training for officers. All those are all included with this next package that we're going to buy, so we won't have to have those line items anymore. So we're going to use that money to help pay for this and also that cost. And then also, we're currently paying the installments for the current tasers that we have. So that would stop and the new ones would start. So really, the difference is going to be about four thousand dollars between what we pay now and what we would be paying here. So it'd be four thousand dollars more going forward for the next five years. So with that, I would take any questions that you may have or entertain a motion.
Councilor Crum?
I know there's really nothing to do about it because it's the only company doing it. You said it's the same plan we have now, so we have the five-year warranty right now?
That's correct. We do.
You said we had a couple that failed, we had issues with. Did we have any problem with the warranty?
None whatsoever. They took them back and replaced them.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear.
Their customer service isn't very good.
Okay.
Councilor Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the taser upgrade as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on second to place the taser, tasers as presented. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Ewer? Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next we have consideration of purchase of John Deere twenty thirty-two R.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We receive quotes to purchase a John Deere twenty thirty-two mower. It's somewhat similar to a very small tractor. This mower will be utilized to maintain stormwater ditches in other areas in town that are not finished turf. The mower will place a nineteen ninety-four with just over sixteen thousand hours. So we've definitely got its useful life out of it. I'm requesting approval to purchase the John Deere twenty thirty-two mower from Prairieland Partners LLC Wichita in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. And this is a budgeted item and will be paid out of the street capital alley funds. Stand for any questions you may have.
Councilor Crum?
Thinking, make sure those last thirty years.
They don't think they make things that way anymore.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the John Deere twenty thirty-two R as presented.
The motion on second to purchase the John Deere twenty thirty-two R as presented. Councilman, any word?
Tony, I just have a question. The old mower, what are you going to do with that?
Probably purport away with it.
Okay, so you just dispose of it and.
Need further discussion? Question, please.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have consideration of purchase of Toro Sand Pro.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Hayesville Recreation Department is requesting authorization to purchase a Sand Pro Toro. The three-wheel field Toro is the industry standard for ball field maintenance. We would like to continue to utilize the new Toro in addition to our current Toro to drag and prep our baseball fields. Having the second Toro with the same interchangeable attachments will aid in our field prep process. Professional Turf Products is the area dealer for the Toro. I am requesting authorization to purchase the Sand Pro thirty forty Toro from Professional Turf Products LP for a total of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and twelve cents. This will be paid for out of sustainability grant funds. Can I stand for any questions?
Councilor Crum?
Is the one we have already, is it just having trouble keeping up with the amount of work you have to have? Or was it purpose trying to have a second?
Yeah, between us, between the right department and Public Works trying to prep Field One at the same time for, for campus games and all the work they do on there and then all the work that the aviators do all summer long. It just, there's a lot of give and take on using the one machine to, to get fields done.
Where would it be stored?
It would be stored in our new sixteen-by-forty shed.
So it'll be in the.
Inside.
What would council like to do?
When nobody has a question, I make a motion to accept the bid for the professional Toro for twenty-eight thousand, four eighty-one twelve.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the purchase of the Toro Sand Pro. Any discussion? Question, please.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item seven, department reports, budget update. Will?
Hey, I wanted to give a little bit of a budget update. We received our new assessed valuation numbers from the county last week. The new assessed valuation for the city is eighty-four million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seventy-seven dollars. This is an increase of eight million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars over last year's final valuation. The amount of the increase that is from new construction is nine hundred, fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is about ten point eight-five percent of the increase in assessed valuation. Earlier in this year, we had two individuals contacted me after the county distributed the evaluation notices and those residents were concerned about the increases in the property appraisals that they received notice of and how that might lead to increased property taxes. The revenue neutral rate, which is the state's latest budget control device, and we're still under that this year. And the purpose of the revenue neutral rate legislation is to cap the total amount of dollars levied, basically keep it the same year to year unless you want to go through the revenue neutral rate public hearing process. Based on the new valuation and the total dollars we levied last year, our revenue neutral rate is forty point nine zero seven mils. Our certified mil rate last year was forty-five point four three two mils. What to expect at the next council meeting will be a request to exceed the revenue neutral rate to capture new construction, which is something that the legislation did not consider when it was passed. And then also to consider any increases in expenditures that we'll have based on inflation and the increase in the consumer price index. And the July council meeting, basically, there would be a presentation of the entire budget. And then if council would like to, there'd be a process to state the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and approve notices of public hearing for the revenue neutral rate public hearing and the regular budget public hearing. After that, I would then have to notify the Sedgwick County Clerk of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. That would need to be done by July twentieth and also publish the notices of public hearing. In the August council meeting, there would be no official budget work done. The September council meeting would be when both public hearings would be. And then an approval to exceed the revenue neutral rate in the form of a resolution with a vote via, with a roll, roll call vote. And then we would have to conduct the public hearing, the regular budget public hearing and approve the budget. Those would be the steps that we would go through. The September council meeting would be where we'd have the public hearings because if you exceed the revenue neutral rate, public hearing has to be between August twentieth and September twentieth, based on the state statutes. Are there any questions or concerns about what I've stated or want me to repeat anything that I mentioned earlier?
Councilor Crum?
Isn't that exactly what we did last year?
We did go through the process to exceed the revenue neutral rate last year and the year before.
Just for the new stuff, not.
Two years ago, it was only for the new construction. Last year, there was, it was a little bit more than the new construction.
Okay, okay.
Any further questions for Will? Seeing none? Thank you. Next we have B, administrative services, Georgie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to remind everyone, the hometown market is open on Saturdays now from eight to noon. They have different activities going on plus several different vendors, so check them out when you can.
Thank you. Next we have city clerk, Angie.
City offices will be closed on June nineteenth, Monday, and on July fourth, which is a Tuesday this year. And then we will also be open till seven o'clock tomorrow if anybody needs to take care of any businesses to be home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, chief.
Tonight, our visiting officer is Officer Scott Kitzemberger. He's out there, he's one of our newer officers, he's doing a great job for us on the afternoon shift. So about this time of day, he's normally out there. So say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, just wanted to remind everybody with the Fourth of July coming up, that, wanted to remind everybody when they can detonate fireworks and when they should not. Detonation of fireworks within the city is permitted between eight AM and ten thirty PM, June twenty-seventh through July second. And then on July third and fourth, they're allowed between the hours of eight AM to midnight. There are no legal firework detonations on July fifth, so I want to just make sure everybody's aware of that, that if you are shooting fireworks on July fifth in Hayesville, you can receive a ticket for that. Also, make sure that you're being safe, not drinking and shooting fireworks and, and making sure that if you're shooting them here, make sure that you bought them here. Don't, don't buy stuff somewhere else or in another state and then come here and shoot it because that can get you in trouble too. One other thing, as they normally do, nine one one has set up their non-emergency line, which will be available this year from June thirtieth through July fifth, which will be an extra day. So it'll be June thirtieth through July fifth. That line will be active from six PM to three AM. You can call with any non-emergency issues such as fireworks, loud parties, things like that. We'd call the alternate number instead of calling nine one one and tying up those lines for emergencies. So that non-emergency number is two nine zero, one zero one one. Again, that's two nine zero, one zero one one. We'll put that out on social media. Also, Sedgwick County will also put that out on social media to make sure everybody can get that number and has access to it. But again, that's available from June thirtieth through July fifth from six in the evening until three in the morning. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next we have Public Works, Tony?
The recycling center at Public Works will be open on Saturday, June twenty-fourth from ten AM to noon. And also, the contractor for this year's street maintenance program has communicated that they are tentatively scheduled to begin the work on, after July fourth. So in the meantime, we'll be going door to door to residents specifically on Baughman and Hennfield to kind of communicate the process since that'll be a total street reconstruction, so.
All right, thank you. Next we have. Yeah, Recreation, Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have our Fourth of July celebration that will be on July 4th in Rigs Park. We'll start off the day with our new cornhole tournament that we played on the concrete boards outside the activity center. The Independence Day Parade will start at 8:00 AM and will go from Hayesville Middle School to the Methodist Church on Grand. Then we'll move over to Rigs Park for the OK Kids Fishing Derby, Frog Races at 10:00, free hot dogs at 11:00, water games in the park, and then we'll end the day with the Citizen of the Year announcement at 7:15, concert by Bad Mother Hubbard, and fireworks at approximately 9:45. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have item eight, appointments. For the appointments of, council agrees, I think it's to appoint all the people to that board, whether it's a historic board or recreation or a park board planning. There's several names listed on each appointment letter. And senior planning committee. So first one is appointment to the Historic Committee. Cusman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the appointments of Patty Waters, Kyle Bowe, and Teresa Wilson to two-year terms to the Historic Committee.
We have motion on second for the appointments as presented to the Historic Committee. Any discussion? Question, please. Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
B., appointments to the Park Board. Cusman Benner?
Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Jonah Harris and Mary Ann Daly to Park Board.
We have a motion on second for the appointments to Park Board as presented. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have C., appointments to the Planning Commission. Cusman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the appointments of Tim Azier, Nicole Franken, Jeff Blood, and Dan Rinke to the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, appointments for two-year terms.
Second.
We have a motion on second for the appointments to the Planning Commission as presented. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have D., appointments to the Senior Planning Committee. Cusman Benner?
Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Kim Cooley, Ruth Miller, Mary Helen Jordan, Sue Griffin, Barbara Messnier, and Shirley Campbell to the Senior Center Planning Committee.
Second.
We have a motion on second for the Senior Center Planning Committee for a linear term. Cusman Crum?
I noticed we have one person running here from Clearwater. Is there a reason for that? Is that for guidance or is that somebody that's recently from Hayesville or?
Uh, what's the...
Mary Helen Jordan.
She actually lives here. I gotta confirm that. Or has recently moved here. I will double check on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Question, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Next, item nine, opportunity to citizens be heard. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak?
I'm here because I was curious to know the progress of the assisted living facility. And I heard you mention earlier that they are doing groundbreaking soon.
Correct. If you don't mind coming up to the podium, the way we can hear you on the speakers. If you could state your name and your address, please.
Marie Riggs, 401 Alexander Hayesville. And my question is what the progress is on the assisted living facility.
Okay, so there will be groundbreaking on June 29th at 10:00 AM. They're on the, on the ground. They're on River Forest on the eastern side on Kay Avenue. You're more than welcome to come out and watch the groundbreaking.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next we have item 10, consecutive session. We have none. Item 11, review of expenditures. A, summary of May expenditures.
I move to receive and file the May expenditures.
Second. We have motion on second to receive and file the May expenditures. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have item 12, consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Cusman Thompson?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion on second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Question, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, item 13, council items. A, council concerns. Does council have any concerns? Cusman Crum?
Not a concern. I just wanted to thank the staff again for getting a good audit and talk about how good we are at doing it and how good we are at getting them the information they need as well. And we appreciate that.
I think, Cusper, Ewer?
I just have a question. I think it'd be for Tony or the chief. When they had that chase down Turkle and they took out the fence, when are they going to replace that?
Yeah, we just gotta, we just gotta replace it, straighten that one, and maybe actually redo some of that western side of that gate. But it's still somewhat together, but it definitely doesn't look very visual. But yeah.
Yeah. Okay, just, just checking.
Yep.
Cusman Ewer?
I didn't have a concern, but I just wanted to say a big shout out to the Pride for the shredding event Saturday. I took quite a few boxes over and there was quite a few people lined up and they said they were pretty busy. So just a big shout out because it does help.
It does. Thank you. Any other concerns, council? If not, we'll move on to B., council actually request updates.
All right, update for 7050 Plaza. The only remaining item is the skirting to be installed. I hope by next meeting, we'll be able to close this one out. And then 7106 South Broadway, on May 9th, the property owner was charged with fines and fees, put on probation. They have a review date set for July 11th. If at that time, the property is not cleaned up, the judge will revoke his probation and enforce jail time. And then the last one, East Grand and North Ward Parkway, the resident has been counseled on city code pertaining to storing a trash cart and also impeding travel with their trash carts. So the case is considered closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have item 14, adjournment.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
We have a motion on second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? Question, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.